I'd like to call to order the regular meeting for Thursday, July 3rd, 2025. Please silence your phones and if you have any, if you would like to speak on any topic, any item, please fill out a blue slip to the rear of the room and bring it up here to Ms. Jennifer before the item comes up. Through invocation and pledge of allegiance, Mr. Barti.
Those gracious and holy father, we just thank you, Lord. We thank you for this day, we thank you for this meeting, heavenly father, and we just thank you for the purpose that we're all here, heavenly father, to just uplift you and to work for our communities and to make this a better place for every residence of Calcasieu Parish. And Lord, we ask that as the decisions we make tonight, that each decision we make is pleasing in your sight, and we will be so careful to give you all the glory for it all. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Face the flag. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Roll call, Ms. Wallace.
Mr. Amshar is unable to attend. Mr. Andrew Pond?
Here.
Mr. Barti?
Here.
Mr. Bowers?
Here.
Mr. Burley is out of town. Ms. Eason?
Here.
Mr. Guillory?
Yeah.
Mr. Hayes?
Here.
Mr. Landry?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Markentale?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
President Barris?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 1A, adopt an ordinance to levy the ad valorem general purpose tax millages for the year 2025 as submitted by the parish tax assessor.
I'll be the bad guy. Go ahead.
Got a motion by Mr. Landry.
Second.
100% for it.
No, definitely not.
Second by who wants to follow, Mr. Markentale. Any discussion, any questions, any objection, that item carries. Chris Landry. Item 1B, adopt an ordinance to levy the ad valorem maintenance tax millages for the year 2025 as submitted by the parish tax assessor.
Move on 1B, second.
A motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Quinn. Any discussion, any objection, that item carries. So, item two, we're gonna go back to this one at 5:45. There's anybody that's wanting to speak on a condemnation case, please make sure you fill out a blue card prior to the item. Item number three, A, presentation of a retirement certificate to Ms. Teresa Schmidt, reporter, KPLC TV. Mr. Smith.
Wait, I thought it was the Lifetime Achievement Award.
Well, it's definitely close.
Give me a few minutes, Kay.
Wow. I'm standing next to a legend here. I mean, I can honestly say, you know, I've been watching her for a very long time.
Get on with it.
I know when I talked to her a couple of months ago, she said she was retiring, and I just really said, why? But she said, Mike, you know, I'm blank, blank years old, so I wanna go home and I guess all the new reporters gonna actually, you know, pass the torch and, you know, they gonna just carry on. And I thought to myself, I say, wow, I know who people gonna call now, because I know whenever I have an issue in my district, the first thing they say, I'm gonna call Teresa Schmidt. And I'm gonna make sure that KPLC get this. So, I don't know who they gonna call, Tony T., Ghostbusters. I don't know who they gonna call, Ghostbusters. So, I mean, so hopefully, basically, you know, train somebody to answer those calls, because I know they always wanna call somebody on me, some of my colleagues, whatever.
Well, my last day is Monday, so I'll spend the whole day training people how to play.
Well, I know it. Well, she walked into KPLC back in April of 1978, so I don't know what we were doing back then, but, you know, that was 47 years ago.
How many were not yet alive then?
Forty-seven years. I figured it out.
You look around this table and say, well, there's not many of that here.
I feel more comfortable here. Hardly anyone I work with was alive then, but anyway.
I know. Like I say, 47 years, that's what, two scores and seven years. So, you know, I always wanted to say that, so, but it was two scores and seven years ago. But, you know, we are here, you know, I know my colleagues got a lot to say to you, but we are here to present you with this proclamation.
Oh, Lord.
Yeah, I know, it's very nice, too, and it actually reads, certificate of appreciation presented by the Calcasieu Parish Police Jury on this third day, July 2025, to Teresa Schmidt, in honor and recognition of 47 years. That's two scores and seven years, a dedicated service to the citizens of southwest Louisiana throughout her outstanding work as a reporter for KPLC. Congratulations and best wishes on your retirement. Signed, Judge Barris, Parish President, and myself, Mike Smith, Vice President.
Okay.
Thank you for your service.
Well, thank you.
Okay, I will say, and you have the mic now you wanna talk.
Well, I used to cover the police jury. I used to work with Judge, and I know, Ron, and you still run that limo? You still got that? I mean, I had a lot of fun covering the police jury, I really did. I guess some of the people I think about when I think about covering the police jury, who remembers Daryl Derwin?
I remember him.
Okay, all right, because one of the more memorable meetings I covered, I think I was like nine months pregnant, and somehow or another, they didn't televise the meetings then, and somehow or another, the subject of what would we do if Teresa went into labor during a police jury meeting? And so, Daryl jumped over the rail and came to my aid as though it was happening right there. That was one of the more memorable things, but anyway, it's come so far and I've, I learned so much, you know, covering the police jury, and I've interviewed not all of you, but most of you. I don't know, there's some new faces. Ron, I mean, the way you guys switch around, it's like you do the school board for a few years and you move to the police jury. But anyway, I'm looking forward to sitting on my sofa and staring into space for about six months, and then, I don't know exactly what I'll do, hopefully get more hugs and kisses from grandbabies and stuff, so, but thank you very much, I really appreciate it. If I can ever do anything for you, I'm not that hard to find, so.
Mr. Andrew Pond.
Teresa, I wanna say that, and we've worked on a professional basis with my regular job.
Well, I was professional.
And that's where I'm going. You always, you never shy away from tough questions, and to Mike's point, I'm gonna call Teresa Schmidt. What you've always done is you've got both sides of the story, and you reported it, and that's good journalism, and you're a true representative of your profession.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate that. That means a lot.
Mr. Gill.
Teresa, I remember many a times, right, right here, Teresa.
There you are.
I remember many a times you was calling me, I was in the airport, on the road, wanting to know a story, but I want you to really enjoy yourself, it's always been great, so have, enjoy yourself this retirement.
Thank you. My new motto is not dead yet.
Mr. Hayes.
Thank you, Jeff. Teresa, I remember standing with you on the campus of LaGrange Senior High School, they had a bomb threat, and you couldn't go, let's see what the deal was, you couldn't go on campus, they didn't want people being photographed, their kids being photographed, that kind of thing. So, you and I stood there in the heat all afternoon waiting for the clear signal, which finally came, a long time after we were standing there. I found it to be a pleasure being with you that day, and I really got impressed when I find, found out you had five children.
No, four.
Four. Oh, go ahead, take five. You're a champ. You are a champ.
Well, I always interview, great sense of humor.
Good luck to you.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate it. So, anybody wanna criticize me for anything?
Well, Mary Kay wants a shot.
No, I just wanna say, I can't remember a time when you weren't on the TV. Of course, I didn't watch the news when I was really young, because, but I really admire your, the legacy that you leave behind. It will be so hard to fill your shoes and, you know, it'll be hard to find somebody who just, you know, does the job of Teresa Schmidt.
I appreciate it.
So, thank you so much for your service, and enjoy your retirement.
I will. Well, thank you so much.
Mr. Barti.
Mr. Smith, you know, I said once before, you can always tell when a story is serious because they send Teresa Schmidt. I remember sitting in a media meeting not last year, and someone from Channel 7 was saying, you know, Teresa, we can't send her on everything, because everyone's always asking for Teresa Schmidt.
Aw, that's sweet.
And my response was, you know, that sounds right. When I was first elected, people would say, look, we have a problem, and if y'all can't solve it, we're gonna contact Teresa Schmidt. So, I told the representative from Channel 7, I said, well, that's good to know. I said, from here on in, when they tell me that, knowing Channel 7 can't send everybody to Teresa Schmidt to work with everybody, I'm, my response was, well, I'm gonna tell, you do that, you go ahead and call Teresa Schmidt. So, now that you're retiring, I'm hoping everybody doesn't get it. If I still get those calls, I'm gonna still tell them, yes, you need to call Teresa Schmidt.
Hey, that's fine. I may not have anything to do, maybe I wanna talk on the phone.
But I just wanna say, just thank you for your service, you've been a class act.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
And hopefully you will enjoy your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Well.
Ms. Teresa, you are not getting off this easy. So, you know, I had the pleasure of working with Ms. Teresa, one of the hardest working gals I've ever seen, but her journalistic, just her journalistic integrity and her detail, her attention to detail was unmatched, and you don't see it a lot, you don't hardly see it at all anymore. And I just, I just remember her running through the newsroom, I need an edit bay, I'm on deadline, I'm on deadline. And, and look, if you, if you had, get out of the way, she was on deadline, dang it. And, but yeah, you know, like you said, when they, when they called Teresa, it was for the big stories. We had one, I think you did interview me one time, it was a big bottle rocket thing.
Is that what it was?
But.
I remember that.
Way to go. Well done. Enjoy those grandbabies.
I will.
And we'll see you around town.
Okay, I'll, I'll give you all my, my phone number.
Okay.
When I get a new phone.
Mr. Bowlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know what's going on with something in the water, but in the last two weeks, if you haven't noticed, we have had three media legends leave us, with John Bridges last week, excuse me, Teresa and Tom tonight, so let's kinda slow that down, please. But on behalf of the staff, we appreciate.
Thank you.
Your dedication to what you do. I don't know when you started covering the police jury, but I met you in the 90s at the juvenile justice when I was wearing that hat out there. And you could always count on several things with Teresa. Number one, she was always gonna handle a big story, she was always gonna handle the tough questions, and Teresa, I mean this, you're always fair.
Well, thank you.
And we appreciate that. We wish you well in your retirement, and we're gonna miss you.
Well, thank you. Who knows, maybe I'll become one of those rabble rousers and come up here and give you trouble. Come on.
One more thing for you.
Oh.
One more thing, and Jeff's gonna bring it.
Aw, isn't that sweet? I love flowers. Thank you so much. What, you want me in the middle? Just don't, just don't let me look fatter than them. Okay.
3B, presentation of a retirement certificate to Mr. Thomas Hafer, Director of Communications and Media. Mr. Bowlin.
Come on, Tom. We'll take a picture in a minute, let it sound. Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I could start off by thanking Tom for his years of service at the police jury, but while true, it's just not enough. You see, his dedication to the police jury is always been unwavering, but it's also his important work that he's brought to the community of Calcasieu Parish in southwest Louisiana. If you didn't not know, Tom was born in Michigan and grew up in Salem, Illinois. At a young age, he started working part-time at a local radio station, I think we can imagine that. And he continued to work there through parts of his high school and college career. He received his bachelor degree in journalism in 1985 from Eastern Illinois. If you know Tom, he has a great sense of humor, but during his time at Eastern Illinois, the quarterback of the Panthers of Eastern Illinois was none other than Sean Payton, our beloved Saints coach. So, one day they asked Tom about the relationship with Mr. Payton or Coach Payton, this is Tom's words. "I met Sean on two different occasions while I was in school there. I remember those two occasions, but strangely enough, he does not." He doesn't know why that is. After graduation, he made his way down to Selma, Alabama, and worked for a radio station, and that is where he met Mr. George Swift, who's here tonight. Thank you, George. It wasn't long after that that George convinced Tom to move to our community. Now, that was in 1988, so again, George, thank you. Well done. Little amen's in the back tonight. From what I understand, Tom really had his sights on bigger news media outlets. I think every person who does that business probably thinks of that. Well, he did until he met Kay, his wife of today. I think she's here tonight. Where you at, Kay? So, we gotta thank George and Kay. Tom stated that he really fell in love with this place really quickly, but quicker he fell in love with her. They were married in 1992. It's a great story. During this period, he worked with McNeese, radio stations, and if you're old enough to remember, the Ice Pirates. He was a big Ice Pirate guy back in those days. He has done radio broadcasts for McNeese State University, football, basketball, softball, and baseball since 2000. I don't know about you, but over the last two months, when people come up to me and say, is, Tom Hafer's retiring? I said, yes, he is, it's a sad day, but he's not leaving McNeese, right? No, he's not leaving McNeese, he will still be the voice of the Cowboys, correct, Tom?
Correct.
In April of 2005, we hired him at the police jury, and he was tasked with improving our government, government access channel. He brought a ton of expertise to the department, but he also brought Hurricane Rita four minutes, four months after he started, Rita followed. There's a little story, I don't like what they call in Hurricane Rita stories, but during the hurricane and shortly thereafter, the communications were just terrible. You couldn't get cell phone service, you couldn't get anything. So, Tom was in Vilplat shortly after the hurricane, and Brian could not find him. So, how do you get a media guy to come back to the parish and come back to the EOC? John Bridges in a live broadcast says, if anyone knows the whereabouts of Tom Hafer, or if Tom, if you're listening, please report to the EOC. Tom reported to the EOC. That's a great story. He became Director of Communications in 2012, and I think we all know Tom has really made that a model across the country when it comes to common media. He has been with us through all natural disasters, from hurricanes to ice storms, he has been there. He's always been that great conduit between the parish and the media, and I know Teresa's here tonight. I don't know what all of us are gonna do without those Friday phone calls from Teresa and Tom talking every Friday, but it was, it was something. Tom, I wonder if you ever kept account of how many press releases you did for the parish? It's gotta be a huge number.
No doubt.
I'm gonna end with this. I pulled up an old press release, and Tom had a quote of what it was like being a public information officer during tough times. This is Tom's quote. "The most rewarding thing for me as a public information person was having an impact on people and just perhaps giving them comfort." That's Tom, and that's a job well done.
I'd like to introduce my family, Kay, her sister Anne, there's Kelly, my sister-in-law, my mother-in-law Patricia, my nephew and godson, Cole, say hi, Cole. Okay, Cole actually calls me godfather, which is terrific, makes me feel like Marlon Brando, so, thank you, Cole. And there's, there's a story that involves the police jury on how I became Cole's godfather. His original godfather or his godmother is my, is my wife Kay, and his godfather was the late Tony Tremonti, his uncle, that's Kelly's little brother, who was, of course, Tony was your colleague here. And after Tony's passing, Cole asked me if I would be his godfather, and which was like, heck yeah, that was an easy answer. Thank you, Cole, it's an honor. And then Cole's dad, Kirk, my brother-in-law. I'll try to be brief, but I won't succeed. I wanna quote Ray Wiley Hubbard, the great Texas musician, Mr. Barris abides. "The days when I keep my gratitude higher than my expectations, I have really good days." And I can tell you right now, as I stand before you, that my gratitude is in the stratosphere for all the nice things that have happened to me here. It's higher than the drone my staff flies, I'm telling you. So, I'd just like to thank some people and express my gratitude here this evening. I wanna start with the police jury. This jury, this group, what a great group this is, and all of the jurors past and present, the support that you have given me and the faith that you all have had in me in, in getting information out and broadcasting your message, I appreciate it all so much. The police jury, dating back into the 70s and on to today, has built a wonderful organization here. This is a remarkable group of people, and they function remarkably well, and the police jury should be proud of the way this place functions. Congratulations on what you have done. With that, I need to thank the people who operate this place. Dane, thank you, thank you for everything. Brian Beam, I would not have been hired here without Brian Beam. He was a mentor to me and a friend, and we would love to have music talks all the time. I also wanna thank Mark McMurray, who was also here while I was in tenure. Might as well go ahead and thank Rodney Vincent, I never met him, but while we're at it, and talking about building an organization, they were all a part of that, so, so thank you to them. In administration, Alberto, thank you, you have a, just a brilliant future ahead of you, except in our fantasy football league. You're doomed to decades of mediocrity. Jessica, I really, I should just thank the whole Booth family, really, but Jessica, in the early days, and I knew nothing, and you saved me from embarrassment and humiliation on I cannot tell you how many occasions. I'd get the phone call, and it would be, Tom, you might wanna say it this way, Brian will like it better that way, dozens of times. Thank you, and I especially wanna thank you for helping me create the, the plan to put together the Communications and Media Department. Thank you. I thank most of the staff yesterday, but, but the staff, that was the leadership, the staff as a whole is remarkable, and all of the nice people that I have met here, I will cherish all of those memories. Helen Lade, I met Helen Lade, how could I not enjoy working here? To JP and to my staff, JP, you got this? Only worry when, when you get the call from the Weather Channel and they're asking if they could send somebody down, that's, that's when you need to worry, other than that, it's all good. To my staff, JP in particular, but, but the staff as a whole, they spent about the first 18 years of my career making me really look good, and the last couple of years, they've started making me look obsolete and outdated, and that is why it's time to go. I wanna thank the media, Teresa and everyone, they have treated me very kindly. I wanna thank my family. Kay, thank you, I love you. I promise, the next hurricane evacuation, I'll drive, we won't stop until Nebraska, Manitoba, Arctic Circle, wherever. And to all of the rest of you, I missed a lot of family events because of what we, what we have to do up here, and I apologize for that, and I will make all of the rest of them. to do up here, and I apologize for that, and I will make all of the rest of them. And some of the staff that, I haven't mentioned individual names, but I want to go ahead and mention Cindy, Margaret, Jessica, Julie, Brandon, Brandon, Laura, Jared, Jack, Sarah, Morgan, and one other one, and that is special because today is her last day as well, as she's retiring, and that is Molly Morgan. So thanks to all of those people. Thank to all of you for listening to me go on for a long time, and I am having a really good day. Thanks.
You want to present that?
Well.
I'll be quiet. Certificate of appreciation, this is to Mr. Thomas Hayfer, Director of Communications and Media, in recognition and appreciation of 20 years of service to the citizens of Calhoun Parish. Congratulations and best wishes on your retirement.
We've got to get to the condemnations.
Tom, I just want to say, the year when I was president and when the storm and everything came, and you was telling me and CNN was calling me and everybody else, you were like, "Hold on now, let me tell you what to say." So many times you wrote out my speeches and everything, and I really appreciate it. And Tom, but look, I really hope you enjoy your retirement. Please enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
It's been great working with you.
You too.
Mr. Hayes.
Well, the best news about this tonight is that Tom is not leaving McNeese for sports. And I've seen that develop over the years. We've been together now, what, 20, 30?
Yeah.
Something like that. I remember one vivid occasion with Tom. It was a national championship football game up in Chattanooga, Tennessee. And George was up there, of course, ramrodting the show, and it was time for the game to go on. No Tom. We're looking around, where's Tom? Where's Tom? What's the deal? So I go in the broadcast booth before the kickoff, and there are two legs sticking out from under the broadcast booth, his legs. I had found Tom. Tom had got a hold of some bad water the night before. He'd missed the broadcast the first 15 minutes. George came to me and he said, "Okay, you're going to be the play-by-play man." I said, "George, I never did play-by-play in my life." He said, "You're doing it now." And I'd sit there and babble for about 15 minutes, and Tom came around. So the game goes through. McNeese loses a game in a heartbreaker. We get to the end of the ballgame. It's time to go get the vehicles now and go home. Tom couldn't find his car.
That's true.
He walked, we lost Tom again. This time, he was walking by himself up and down the streets of Chattanooga trying to find his car. It has been an experience with this young man, I'm here to tell you.
I used the, it was a rental car, and I had to use the key fob as I just walked up and down the streets with the key fob until I found it.
Well, you kind of stumbled up and down the street, but you made it. And by the way, he is the best beer can collector known to mankind. He collects empty beer cans, and he does it all over the country with McNeese Football. How many do you have, you think?
Several thousand, I'm not sure.
I'm serious. Tom, you're great.
Brian, pleasure working with you here and in the hobby job. Thank you, my friend.
Oh, Ms. Eason.
Tom, I've had the pleasure of being around you for a lot of years, but really interacting with you as a police juror. And I can say that every time I've ever been around Tom, you are upbeat, you're positive, you're helpful, you're encouraging, and I really appreciate that. I've never seen you any other way. And Kay, I hope he's that way at home.
I was not that day in Chattanooga.
You were not that day? Well, I wasn't in Chattanooga, so I think you probably were, because my impression is that you're always positive and upbeat. Thank you for everything you've done for the police jury. You know, you've made us look good. And I hope you enjoy your retirement. You've earned it, you deserve it, and enjoy.
It means a lot, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, my man. You're off. Clock out. Make sure you clock out, Tom. Mr. Bowlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is a bittersweet day, but before we move on, and I know Tom would be proud, I think it's time that we recognize our new Director of Communication and Media, Mr. Joseph Booth. He has been with the parish since December of 2003. He received his bachelor's degree in Mass Communications and Media from McNeese State University in 2005. JP, we call him, I don't know if we call him Joseph too, but JP, we call him, has been involved in many initiatives, and Tom has groomed JP for this job. He is surrounded by a fantastic team at the Communications and Media Department. His beautiful wife Amanda is here tonight, so would you all both please stand? He is going to do a great job, and we're very proud of him. Congratulations, Joseph.
Thank you, Mr. Bowlin. Mr. Gilry.
Just one second. JP, would you come to my computer real quick?
I just want to know if we have a replacement for JP?
All right.
Or is he going to do two jobs?
Okay, so we're going to go back to item two, our public hearing. And again, if you have any, if there's anyone from the audience who wishes to speak on an item, there's a blue slip on the table in the back. Please fill it out and bring it to Ms. Wallace before the item comes up. Hold a public hearing at 5:45 ordering said owners to show cause as to why these structures on said property should not be condemned. 2A, 600 Hackberry Street, Lake Charles.
Second.
I have a motion to condemn by Mr. Smith and a second by Ms. Eason. Do we have? You need pictures? Are you good? We've got a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Ms. Eason. Again, any discussion, any objection, that item carries. 2B, 5533 Lejeune Street, Lake Charles. Got a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Anyone here to speak on that item?
I have a question, Judge.
Mr. Stelly.
On 2B.
Kind of read it like him, that's his district.
Yeah, where does Iway come in right there? Is that where the guy lives?
On his district.
Property owner. I'm sorry. Okay.
Are you keeping score?
No.
I got a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Any discussion, any objection, that item carries. 2C.
Move on to 2C to be condemned?
5622 Lejeune Street, Lake Charles. Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Quinn. Any discussion, any objection, that item carries. 2D, 8559 Gulf Highway, Lot 116.
Move to condemn and remove in 30 days.
Second.
All right, so I have a speaker on this. I don't know if you're for or against, but Ms. Carla Russo. Come up to the podium, please, ma'am. Just state your name and your address for the record when you arrive. Please.
Okay, Carla Russo, Morrow, 8559 Gulf Highway, Lot 116, Lake Charles.
And are we for this, are we against this?
This was supposed to be my retirement home, and I had moved out to have some floors put in, and some squatters moved in and tore it up, so I don't know what to do. I still owe a lot on it, and I came here to see if it's worth fixing or not.
Mr.?
They were in there like three to four months before I could get them out by court, and they tore it up inside.
Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, so I just want to make sure I understand you. You were living in the mobile home. You were wanting to do some repairs, and so you moved out so the repairs could be done. And when you moved out, squatters moved in?
That's, they're trash. They were meth head squatters or something. That's how they lived in my place for four months when I moved out. They pulled up all my floors. They took the wiring out. I've got the sheriff's department on all this. They tore out all my floors. They sold everything in my house. I lived there for 14 years, and I had bought new flooring to put in there from the hurricane, and I just wanted to replace it all. So I had it standing in a room, and they sold that. They sold everything.
Okay, so did they catch the people that?
Yes.
They were living there, and they caught them, so you had them, they removed them?
I had them arrested four months prior to that, and as far as I know, they're walking the streets. I got their names. They got them for, they was in jail for two months. And then I caught two other ones on a camera, and they were stealing stuff like 500 at a time, and that way they could get out of jail, or they arrested them and let them go. Same day, they went back to my place and stole the rest of stuff. So that's what I'm dealing with, so.
That's very unfortunate. So now, I guess going forward, what is the plan? Because right now, evidently, it is condemnable. And what is your plan to get it cleaned up and get it repaired? How long is this going to take?
I really don't know if it's worth it. I don't know. I still owe a lot on it.
Yeah, I mean, if we condemn it, it's going to be hauled off and demolished. I mean, it won't be there any longer.
Well, how much would it cost me to have that done?
Well, that, I don't know. You would have to call some contractors. We don't know. If it's condemned tonight, you have 30 days to remove it. And if you don't do that in 30 days, then we're going to do that and send you the bill. And then if you don't pay that bill, it will become a tax lien against your property. So I can't tell you how much it would cost. I mean, we sent it out for bid. It would go to the cheapest bidder. But what the price is to haul off a mobile home, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I mean, I would be willing to defer it for 30 days to give you a little bit of time to figure out what you are going to do, and whether you're going to do it yourself. I mean, we'd rather you do it. We'd rather not be involved in it, but evidently, there's been complaints that have been called in, and then, I mean, they're doing their job. They have to respond to the complaint.
Yeah, the mobile home park it's in has been, they destroyed like all the places out there. The grass was up to here.
That's the one down there south on Gulf Highway? Oh, yes.
So they had all kind of people move in there and mess up my place, and now it's costing me, and I just retired, so what kind of funds do I have?
The best thing you can do is get out of that one, because I can tell you, the people that are running that are not doing it the right way.
They're not.
A lot of problems.
They're not.
And that's just the nicest thing I can say about them.
Yeah, I took my whole savings to fix up that place, and I had someone fix, do the floors, and that's what happened. So I think it's more damage than it's worth fixing, to be honest.
Okay, can you, I mean, we can go ahead and condemn it tonight. What are you asking for?
Go for it.
Okay.
Because I don't know how to clean it, and I don't know what to do with it. I mean, I'm by myself. I don't know what to do.
Go ahead, let's hear what Ms. Landry thought.
No, I agree. What I was going to suggest, Mr. President, Mr. Crane and his staff, maybe you can work with him on getting some options of, you know, contacting, trying to save you some money to get it condemned. I think they could help and give you some guidance.
Okay.
They're good people and knowledgeable, and they can help.
Okay, because I still have a big loan on it.
Thank you.
Is it insured?
When, I had it insured, and after the hurricane, they had it insured for one month, I mean, one year, and then they dropped me, and I couldn't find anybody else to insure because their grasses were up to here and past my windows. None of the other trailers were fixed, and I was the first one that spent like $8,000 to get the trees off my trailer, fix it up, clean the yard, and no one else did for like two years. So all kind of people were moving in there, and that's what I get.
Well.
And I don't believe I want to go back there. It's disgusting. It's gross. It's condemned, it's got bad whatever vibes in it.
Bad juju.
Okay, I'll just leave my motion as it was on the floor to condemn.
Okay, Mr. Crane, please, if you guys can give her any tips.
Yes, sir.
I know it's not a great situation, but it sounds like any help would be.
Oh, yeah, we'll try to guide her.
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion to condemn by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Stelly. Any discussion, any objection, that item carries. 2E, 8559 Gulf Highway, Lot 230.
Move to condemn and remove in 30 days.
Second.
All right, we got a motion to condemn by Mr. Landry, second by Mr. Stelly. Any discussion, any objection, that item carries. 2F, 8559 Gulf Highway, Lot 243.
Move to condemn and remove in 30 days.
Motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion, any objection, that item carries. Item 4A, adopt a resolution approving a permanent utility servitude with temporary construction servitude agreement for the Old Spanish Trail Waterline Upgrade Project.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, we missed one on 2.
Your district.
2G, 5852 Pete Say Road, Carlos. Motion by Mr. Markentale, second by Mr. Bowers. Any discussion, any objection? Go back down? Okay. Thank you. That item does carry. Now, let's adopt a resolution approving a permanent utility servitude with temporary construction servitude agreement for the Old Spanish Trail Waterline Upgrade Project. That's 4A. Motion by Mr. Landry, second by Mr. Quinn. Any discussion, any objection, item carries. 5A, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated June 5, 2025. Motion by Ms. Eason and second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion, any objection, item carries. 5B, approve the budget committee report dated July 3, 2025. Mr. Andrew Pont.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The budget committee of the police jury met today at 5:00 PM and received a report from the Division of Finance. On the December 31, 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, the independent auditors issued an unmodified opinion regarding the parish's 2024 financial statements. At the close of 2024, the parish governmental funds reported a combined ending fund balance of $578 million, the majority of which is restricted in nature and inclusive of $28 million in bond proceeds to be spent in the next two years on major capital bond projects. Both governmental revenues and expenditures decreased in 2024 for the prior year due to completion of several disaster recovery projects. The primary government for the parish audit did not receive any findings for the December 31, 2024 audit. The committee recommended the following items be approved for grant funding from the gaming fund. Item 1, Ward 6- Item 1, Ward 6, $50,000, Ward 6 Fire Protection District Number 1, for costs associated with the purchase of new 700, 800 megahertz portable radios. Item 2, Economic Development Community Center Playground District Number 2 of Ward 4. First for $25,000 for costs associated with Louisiana High School Athletic Association 2025 State Baseball Championships, and $20,000 for costs associated with Louisiana High School Athletic Association 2025 State Softball Championships. The committee also recommended the police jury approve an amendment to the fiscal year 2025 budget for those funds that deviate from the estimated budgeted revenues, expenditures, or fund balances. That concludes my report, Mr. President, and I move on behalf of the committee.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew Pont.
Sir.
Mr. Andrew Pont moves to submit report, and Mr. Barti seconds. Any discussion, any objection, that item carries. 5C, adopt a resolution approving a cooperative endeavor agreement between the police jury and the City of Lake Charles for the Calhoun Parish Judicial Complex Project. Motion by Ms. Landry, second by Mr. Lewis. Mr. Gilery.
Just let the record show, I need to recuse myself on that item. Thank you, Mr. ...
Thank you. Any discussion, any objection, that item carries. 5D, adopt a, adopt resolutions approving the following for the Community Awareness and Emergency Response Siren System. 1, Cooperative Endeavor Agreement between the police jury and the Lake Area Industry Alliance. 2, Amendment to the Professional Engineering Contract between the police jury and Associated Design Group. I have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Quinn. Any discussion, any objection, that item carries. 6A, adopt an ordinance rescinding ordinance number 7891, which ordered demolition of one house on the property located at 3158 Mesa Lane, Moss Bluff. Motion by Mr. Quinn, second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion, any objection, that item carries.
Move on 7A.
7A, approve payment of all current invoices. Motion by Mr. Abshire, second by Mr. Quinn.
Mr. Andrew Pont.
I'm sorry, Mr. Andrew Pont. Brian's the other one, yes.
Same hairline.
Mr. Andrew Pont moved on that, and Mr. Quinn seconded. Any discussion, any objection, item carries. 7B, advertise for request for qualifications for architectural services for the Calhoun Public Works East Safe Room Project. Motion by Mr. Gilery and a second by Mr. Markentale. Any discussion, any objection, that item, what? Oh, item carries. 7C, action on bids for assorted pipes and fittings. Staff recommends all bids be rejected due to an error within the bid package, so we will not take action. Motion by Mr. Barti and, and seconded by Mr. Bowers. Any discussion, any objection, that item carries. 7D, adopt a resolution on qualification statements for retail services for the Calhoun Point Landing Bait and Convenience Store. Motion by Ms. Easton, second by Mr. Bowers. Any discussion, any objection, that item. Wait, my bad. Staff recommends MJ LeBlanc Enterprises be awarded the contract. So again, Ms. Easton moves on that, and Mr. Bowers with the second. Any discussion, any objection, that item carries. 7E, action on bids for collection and distribution pipes and fittings. Let's see. Staff recommends the bids of Baton Rouge Wind Water Works, Coburn Supply Company, and Ferguson Water Works be accepted. Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion, any objection, that item carries. 7F, adopt a resolution accepting East Calhoun Parish Consolidated Water Works Project Phase 2, Gochay Road, Lake Street to Common Street as substantially complete. Motion by Mr. Landry, second by Mr. Hayes. Any discussion, any objection, item carries. 7G, adopt a resolution accepting Johnnyboro Road Extension Project as substantially complete. Moved on by Mr. Bowers, second by Ms. Easton. Any discussion, any objection, that item carries. Board appointments. 8A, Community Center and Playground District Number 1 of Ward 6.
Second.
So I have a motion to reappoint on both Mr. Ryan Ware and Ms. Denisea Wood, by Mr. Markentale, and a second by Mr. Stelly. Any discussion, any objections, that item carries. 8B, Community Center and Playground District Number 2 of Ward 4.
And Mr. David Couvion.
Second.
Moved on by Mr. Bowers to reappoint Mr. David Duvall and Mr. David Couvion, seconded by Mr. Andrew Pont. Any discussion, any objection, that item carries. 8C, Community Center and Playground District Number 3 of Ward 7.
Move to reappoint Ms. Connor and Mr. Spell.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Markentale and a second by Mr. Stelly to reappoint, reappoint Ms., or Mr. Quinn, rather. Ms. Diane Connor and Mr. Scott Spell. Any discussion, any objection, that item carries. 8D, Community Center and Playground District Number 4 of Ward 1.
Trey Hand and Mr. Summers.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Quinn to reappoint Mr. Matt Treyhand and Mr. William Bill Summers, and a second by Mr. Markentale. Tell Mr. Bill we say hello. Any discussion, any objection, that item carries. 8E, Community Center and Playground District Number 5 of Ward 5. So we've got a motion to reappoint Mr. Mike West and Mr. Tony O'Bannon, and to defer Mr. Eric Price for 30 days. So, uh, by Mr. Markentale and seconded by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion, any objection, that item carries. 8F.
Move on 8F.
Lake Charles Harbor and Terminal District, Mr. Thomas L. Lorenzi. We are motioning to Mr. Landry, motions to submit Mr. Lorenzi's name.
Lorenzi, Mr. Oakley and Mr. Bruce are, three names go to the governor.
That's right. That needs to be highlighted. By Mr. Landry, seconded by Mr. Barti. Any discussion, any objection, that item carries. 8G, Memorial Hospital Service District.
Defer for 30 days.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hayes and a second by Mr. Gilery to defer for 30 days on Mr. Paul Arnold and Mr. Robert O. Boudreau. Any discussion, any objection, that item carries. 8H, Recreation District Number 1 of Ward 4, Mr. Curtis Alexander. I got a motion to appoint Mr. Eddie White by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Markentale. Any discussion, any objections, that item carries. 8I, Ward 6 Fire Protection District Number 1, Ms. Sarah McDaniel's, McDaniel. Motion by Mr. Markentale to defer for 60 days, seconded by Mr. Quinn. Any discussion, any objection, that item carries. Water Works District Number 10 of Ward 7.
Second.
Mr. Thor McKay. We are deferring that. Mr. Bowers defer, moves to defer for 30, and seconded by Mr. Andrew Pont. Any discussion, any question, that item carries.
Move to reappoint Mr. Dalton Langford.
8K, West Calhoun Airport Authority, motion by Mr. Andrew Pont to reappoint Mr. Dalton Langford, seconded by Mr. Bowers. Any discussion, any objection, that item carries. 8L, Workforce Development Board.
Scott Walker, Linda LeBlanc, and reappoint Burton East and Vicky Rollo.
We got a motion by Mr. Smith to appoint Mr. Scott Walker and Ms. Linda LeBlanc, reappoint Mr. Burton East, and appoint Ms. Vicky Rollo, seconded by Mr. Stelly. Any discussion, any objection, item carries. 9 is an advised item, 10 is an advised item. And... Real quick.
Just want to wish Kay a happy birthday, and let's all wish her a happy birthday. You missed Kay. Our big toe.
Mr. Dog.
I just want to invite everyone over to Red, White &amp; Boom happening today in the Community Center Playground District there in Moss Bluff. It's free admission, dollar hot dogs, $2 hamburgers, $3 jambalaya. Water and drinks are free. Come on down, celebrate in the bluff.
They got any bottle rockets?
This great nation. We got a lot, excellent bottle rocket selection for you, Bets Bares.